Egimofa di pretty babye
Ahaha, amari char
Come and see Egimofa
I beg you be aware of her
Egimofa with her problem
Ahaha, amari char
Egimofa na flentit rabbos
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Egimofa
Ahaha, amari char
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Enjoy
Thank you sir
Yes Okay You didn't put enough vegetable in this rice Okay, I'm gonna do it very soon around that Vegetable will be there If you eat the cake you see has enough sugar Because they told me you people were lacking sugar In your system Make sure enough sugars in the cake But if you eat the cake you get diabetes Don't call me a man Let me see a swallow Like I said, the meat is still back there Let me see a swallow that doesn't have mercy for even bone So if you swallow bone There's a thing I'm gonna do about it Stop it This life is not complete without that negative aspect Don't let it go after the ceremony It continues Papa, I want to take special attention about you Like I pointed out earlier They have a protein called I'll give you a package to go home with
Okay
When we were growing, we had wet horn We were so born of it Even in hot season I can tell the color but I won't pronounce it Here come my daughter, my dearest daughter Longest, longest time
Papa, you don't lose seventy as well If I ask Papa, you look fifty
The things you send across, I absorb them
Oh, give me Papa
I enjoy them What is this?
This is your birthday present
Hey! Hold this for me
No oh
Okay, hold it, hold it No, no, welcome
No
Egimofa we are greeting you, welcome
Adanu welcome
Welcome Your countenance change the love a sudden What is it?
Papa, please, I'm going inside I want to stay inside for now
You don't want to elongate the happiness you have in here Here is your place, not inside If you go inside, how do you have fun? Why should you go inside when we are here?
Papa, why should I stay here?
Many reasons
Did I not tell these fools something? Did I not tell these useless girls what I wanted And what I do not want? And they went ahead and did the one I said I do not want?
What happened?
What happened?
Did I not tell you That I wanted this party to be an all-sisters affair? I told you I wanted it to be something intimate between us No husbands Did I not say it? But uh-uh No! You must do your own Who are these strangers? Who are these strangers? Are they not husbands? I'm asking you, are they not husbands? So, 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 you people are trying to sell me That the family of Mazi Abel Cannot organize a party or anything Without some people inviting strangers in the name of husbands to attend
Egimofa, Egimofa No! The more we stay together, the merrier As anything anybody did to you, just forget it Let's go on with this birthday
That is why I think it is better for me To gently go inside In fact, let me respect my old age and go inside Because if I stay here, my body will be hurting I'll be looking for who to slap I will go crazy Papa, I will cover the birthday But if you want me to stay You can ask these things that call themselves husbands To get out of this house Tell me to do so Just allow me to stay inside on my own Shaking up because if I don't want to spoil your birthday You know I got you too much
You spoiled me already By altering it from your mind, you've spoiled it
I think if you are the problem, let's just
How can I do? Who invited you? Who is celebrating? Did I tell anybody to go? I'm planning even to have to bring more things To swallow, to eat, to drink and all that I want to make you pregnant You're talking about I can handle that
Papa, don't worry, don't worry I know what her problem is Her problem is because she's not married She simply be tired
Shut up, shut up your mouth Just because you're lucky to have married Instead of saying that you prefer him for you, let your husband come In the least, how can he wish that bad to you?
Let's not spoil your surprise birthday Because we have plenty things to eat and drink Aggo, please
While we drinking, there's so much to eat though There's plenty food and chicken inside here Let's eat and enjoy ourselves
Carry on, carry on, don't worry Enjoy yourself
Which one should I bring for you?
Who is lacking meat? Who is lacking whatever? Let's go now
Which one should I give?
Feel happy, feel happy
My mom's not be happy now, be happy Which one should I bring her? There's meat though, please And rice sitting inside Should I bring more for you people? Agne kwa
Let me just be sure something is not going wrong mentally with my daughter
Allow her
Because such things happen, you know
She's part of us
Are you not participating in EC? Even at EC, you know She should have told me that she was hungry How can you reject heaven and you come back to take a food? Does she starve over there?
Let's just be eating
You know, do you know my plan before you came in? To impregnate you With a drink, with rice With a, you did have, all these drinks To get you pregnant
You see? Just be happy
I still insist
You see? You're happy now You still you're happy? Of course, it's just like me Which one should I bring for you? We are not returning all these drinks We have paid for them
This is your dream My wife did
It is my mother's surprise
Egimofa di pretty babye
Ahaha, amari char
Come and see Egimofa
I beg you be aware of her
Egimofa with her problem
Ahaha, amari char
Egimofa na flentit rabbos
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Egimofa
Ahaha, amari char
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
One woman and several troubles in a day If he enter her trap She go show you, baby If na fight he wants She is ready for you What a man who can do Egimofa can do better Boom, boom, Egimofa Iwene wege Boom, boom, Egimofa Opele wakoki Boom, boom, Egimofa Iwene wege Boom, boom, Egimofa Opele wakoki Egimofa di pretty babye
Ahaha, amari char
Come and see Egimofa
I beg you be aware of her
Egimofa with her problem
Ahaha, amari char
Egimofa na flentit rabbos
I beg you be aware of her
Na who go come Egimofa
Ahaha, amari char
Na who go show her love
I beg you be aware of her
Is my eyes telling me this? Or my eyes are lying to me right now? Who is this person that I'm seeing? Is my eyes telling me? Ekene, my childhood friend Is this not Ekene? Hug me, hug me Did you bet with crayfish? Because the crayfish smell is very strong on your body
Egimofa, I can see you haven't changed one bit With this your bad mouth Anyway, I am now a married woman So I'm coming from the market I went to buy crayfish and fish To prepare in salas soup for my husband
Ezioku Hey, that is good though I have my own husband He does not stay in Nigeria In fact, he stays abroad In the UK Just wait, wait a minute, let me call him So that you talk to him and greet him You know, I've been telling him a lot about you
I'm happy to see you
I'm very sure he'll be so happy to talk to you right now
I cannot believe this It's ringing, it's ringing
He's not picking Maybe he's busy Wait, 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 what is the time set? This time, he's usually very busy in the office
I know
You know, he has a very good job abroad A very good job that pays him big money
I know, I know, men like to be busy Even Dim My husband My husband likes me That man is wonderful My husband is a good man Can you imagine? He wakes up very early to better boy My husband If I'm sick now, Dim will remind me to drink my medicine If it was only me, will I remember? Do you know what he normally thinks? He said a woman should be working in the husband's shadow And the woman should not work too fast though They should be walking side by side Because if she now works fast, who will protect her? My Dim likes me
It's okay The only thing I have heard you say here is Can't you say one word without calling your husband's name? Don't you have a life outside your husband? It's no good though
What can I do? You know Dim is the closest person to me Do you know what?
There she goes again
Okay, sorry, be cool Let me change topic What are you doing in the village? Correct babe, see level See your pickup Levels all change
It is not pickup It is truck, truck Your primary education is a complete waste Waste of time and money You did not learn anything Chakum, nothing You are still that empty head that I took
Hi Dim See my husband call me This man loves me He cannot stay two hours without being
So that we We that our husbands are not around We that our husbands are in a very far country We should go and buy rope Tie ourselves on the neck and die
Hi, Dim, my husband
What took you so long? I've been worried
Sorry, I had to wait for the fish tellers You know, they come all the way from Onicha And I wanted to buy your special crayfish for your Mr. Lasse
You know how to take care of your husband
Do you remember my friend? I just remember something I'm in a hurry He hear me because something is spoiling I'm coming, I'm coming, yeah? I'm coming, later, later, later Why is she in a hurry?
Bye bye oh
Okay, bye bye, bye bye
Bye bye oh Bye bye
Hi, Joseph If you like, pick my call If you like, don't pick it The only thing I know is that any day I see you, Joseph I will kill you I will kill you myself You are wicked Stupid man Stupid man, that is what you are After misbehavior, you come back You come back, then I will teach you a lesson That girl when she was That's not fair What is it? You are married, so I should kill myself because you are married Since you are married and will not hear what It's not fair In fact, let me even tell you before I will not step an inch out of this compound Till I leave for the city of Monje What is all this now?
What is it? I hope there's no problem
Wait, let me even ask you village girls What is wrong with the girls in this village? What is their problem? The only thing they know how to do is to get married Every day they are getting married And then they cannot keep their mouth shut They will talk about it They'll broadcast it Anybody they see Whether you ask them or you don't ask them They will tell you If marriage an achievement Now I want to know Is it an achievement? They don't even have anything to show for their lives Nothing No car, no job They don't even have any plans for their life They don't have plans for the future They don't even have plans to own any property The only thing they know how to do is to marry And then give birth Bushamo It can happen by free will That is it They give birth without planning That is the reason there is high rise of criminals in this country Giving birth to criminals everywhere Making my job very hard Every day I'm suffering Pursuing one criminal or the other Because of the foolish girls in this village If they had the decency and the sense to keep their legs short There would be a low increase in criminality And my job will be easy for me Okay, Ndi?
But that's not the problem
It is a problem oh Speak for yourself It is a problem because you don't know How I suffer every day Pursuing criminals from one end of the city to the other Speak for yourself because you just have two children At your age, you have five Three children, one case raso How many did you train? How many are in school? You You have three children already And the way I'm looking at you It's like you're pregnant Ayazo, kwazo It's not about bringing our children It's about training them
Taking this, you don't know how, it's on you every day
Listen, all this girl is about battle If you get out in the village, we'll learn how to keep your legs short Bushofo Rubbish Are you better than me? They're not better than you The only thing they know how to do This is Ndiya Good morning My husband is a warrior He will greet you back My husband this, my husband that Rubbish
Trauma You've heard her now How many children do you have? You have heard what she said though Close this your leg
And it's true, it looks like you're pregnant
If I'm pregnant, they do your business But it's two now You, you have five Close your legs though
I'm going where at my age
She just here shouting, shouting, shouting As if there's a bee inside her breast that is biting her
If you ask me, who will lie at?
Stop giving birth That is the advice Our elder sister does not want us to keep giving birth
Not just that though, don't marry at all
The situation you found yourself yesterday was very pitiful Exhibiting anger to the generations Angry with everybody Especially your brothers-in-law Did they commit any offense? No Then against your own sisters Because they are having what you're not having
No, no
What is no?
No Papa, I'm not agree you, no
Allow me to finish Everything about your anger has today with Joseph, you're supposed to be with that you can't find again That is the truth But if it's not Joseph, it can be another man You go and marry again You know? See, let me just tell you Why your mother named you Egimofa Because Egimofa is a male name Because when she was pregnant of you She expected a male child But it turned out to be a girl But she insisted that you must answer Egimofa She liked that name so much So everything about your behavior is Bragadi shu, bragada All that
Maybe it means I'm supposed to be a man
That's what I'm saying Must you now continue behaving like a man who has lost control? Instead of the woman you are You're a girl, you're a woman Nobody has peace here because of your character Nobody
Papa I will wait for Joseph I will wait for Joseph Papa The money I spent sending Joseph abroad Will not be a waste So after spending my hard-earned money to take him abroad Then one woman, then one bully One woman will now come and marry him As an international man And be posing Then me that did all the work Me that suffered all the suffer Me that spent the money Will now end up with a local man By Makomas One of the masters now He will not die here He will not die here One day, he will come back He will come back here And I'll be here waiting for him And Papa If Joseph does enter this country I will arrest him Hey, I will arrest him
Egimofa checking a man jogi Let me even ask you What if Joseph does not come back? So you're going to remain like this? Like anti-baby-baby You will not marry?
Are you talking?
I'm asking you
Yeah, Effike Are you talking? I say you have the mind to talk You are talking You have said so Okay, since you want to talk You want to talk Let us talk it to the full Effike, who introduced me to Joseph? Open your mouth and answer Who introduced me to Joseph? Then you're not the one who opened that your mouth Ona talka sugar Joseph is a good man My husband has a very good relative It was you And that's your foolish husband That packaged me like this Into the hands of Joseph And now you have the mouth to talk
So we do bad eh? Me and my husband, we do bad to introduce you to Joseph to marry you He's not a bad character that made him not to marry
He say bad No, when you are saying bad, add very Because what you did, you and your husband What you did is a very, 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 very bad thing Yes! You don't need any incantation to know That that introduction that you and your husband did Was very wicked, very evil From the pit of hell and very foolish Yes! Anyway, in fact Papa, please, please, please Die this talk I want to go and sleep Because tomorrow, I'll be leaving for the city So I don't have time for this kind of family nonsense meeting I'm tired I'm tired Yes, so You even said I'm bitter You said I'm bitter? Yes, I am bitter I have, in fact, I agree I am bitter And why you're saying bitter? Add very to it Because I am very, 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 very bitter Very bitter Okay, so now that I have accepted That I am bitter With my whole full chest Are you going to solve my problems for me? Are you going to solve it? Are you? Are you? Are you going to solve this? A man I gave my heart to Took my money And disappeared into the mouth of the repertory And you say I should not be bitter? Hey!